All right. Good morning, everyone. I would like to call the Calbright College Board of Trustees meeting to order this morning on September 17th at 9:04 a.m. And before the meeting gets started, I'd like the board liaison to review the meeting procedures and protocols.
Good morning, everyone, and thank you for joining us. I am Teri Lucas, the board liaison at Calbright College. You can follow our meeting agenda on Board Docs, and the link can be found on our website, which is calbright.org/board. For attendees who wish to make public comment in person, please fill out a public comment card and submit to me. For attendees who participate remotely, please use the Q&amp;A feature on Zoom to address the board for up to three minutes. Public comments should be used to address today's agenda. A reminder that this board meeting is being recorded. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Teri. Please call a roll.
Love, adieu.
Present.
Hildegard Aguinaldo. Maria Blaze.
Present.
Adrian Brown.
Present.
Lillian Corral.
Present.
Amy Costa. Ricardo de la Fuente. Tom Epstein.
Here.
Pam Haynes.
Here.
Lieutenant Governor Kounalakis. Harry Legrand.
Here.
Jennifer Perry.
Sees.
Bill Rawlings.
Present.
Syrian Villa Vicencio.
Here.
Los Villa Lobos. And Joseph Williams.
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right. Thank you for that. Now we'll proceed with the Pledge of Allegiance, and Trustee Blaze, would you lead us in the pledge?
Please rise. Face the flag and put your right hand over your heart. Ready? Begin.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. No real changes to the order of the agenda, if I'm not mistaken. So with that, we'll move on to the President's Report. I am not Hildy, so you don't get a wonderful, you know, thought-out, really articulate President's Report, but I wanted to make a couple of notes. First, another welcome to Trustee Blaze. So this is the other part of our work as a Board of Governors, is the Board of Trustees for Calbright College. So there's a different angle of the work that we do that you'll be seeing today in different types of discussion we have in closed session and in public session. So hopefully, ask the questions like you did yesterday and get as much out of it as you can, which would be great. The only other comments I would make is just a real thank you to the North Orange Community College District and NOCE. You know, NOCE is an organization really aligned with a lot of what Calbright does, just absolutely wonderful partners for Calbright, and we're serving the same type of population of student, trying to make the same impact on the students' lives. So there's a lot we have in common, Calbright and NOCE. And then the last thing I would note is President Menon did a really great panel at the Future Summit, really making sure that we shared our learnings and stayed really centered and shared as we develop technology solutions and innovations that might serve our students, that we need to make sure that we're staying learner-centered. And she really helped us grounded in those folks that might be really focused on the tech work and the fun part of AI and all these more advanced tools, just really, she helped us remain grounded in the work and why we do it. So thank you for that. And with that, I'll turn it over to President Menon.
Thank you so much, Vice President Rawlings and members of the Calbright College Board of Trustees. I also wanted to begin by thanking the team at North Orange County. Every time I come here, I always feel very welcome, and that's all the way from President Valentina all the way down to the entire team. So thank you very much. Also, wanted to welcome Trustee Blaze to our Board of Trustees. Last week, as Bill, Trustee Rawlings mentioned, I had the opportunity to represent Calbright at the California Community College Futures Summit, which is something that brought together technology leaders, researchers, policymakers, and educators across the system to discuss how we actually drive forward educational innovation in a digital area in the ways that can be most impactful for our students and our communities in service of them, also in ways that can boost our economic mobility for working-age Californians specifically. During the panel discussion on preparing students for an AI-integrated workforce, I had the opportunity to also highlight many of the ways that Calbright plays a critical role in shaping the future of California's higher education and workforce ecosystem. So that means I was able to highlight the incredible work of our faculty, really leaning in both within our institution and system-wide in AI efforts to share more about our work as a college, to work collaboratively with technologists, employers, and industry to expand opportunities for learners to not just demonstrate their skills, but also to engage in work-based learning experiences, like our partnership with Ripen and tech micro internships with employers like HubSpot. So for our learners, that future is already here, and we are getting ahead of that curve by remaining learner-centered, as Bill Rawlings said, and focusing our efforts on growing opportunities for our learners to deepen their AI literacy, to engage in that kind of hands-on learning, and to explore AI tools that are already being used in the workforce. At Calbright and across higher ed, we have to increasingly prepare learners for what's going to be most important for them to navigate with growing uncertainty in the world around us, but also as economic and technological shocks continue to reshape the labor market and the opportunity landscape. So as you all know, at Calbright, we serve a student body that reflects the diverse needs of communities across California, and through this, we're focused on equipping them with the skills needed to thrive in our state's economy. For us, that includes both technical skills, such as understanding and applying AI in their respective industries. It also includes increasingly durable skills, so not just the critical thinking, communication, collaboration that everybody talks about, but also resiliency, adaptability, and self-efficacy, skills that are going to be so important to help students navigate what is a rapidly-changing workforce in reality. Our team is deeply engaged in building pathways to meet these needs, not only for our students, but also for employers across the state. So today, on the agenda, you're going to hear from Vice President of Student Services and Success, Don Orth, and Chief Product Officer Vivek Vass about the data-driven transition to our new student journey and how it's paving the way for adult learner success. You'll also hear from Bin Do, Vice President of Research and Development, about the Alumni Experience Design Project that engaged a wide range of alumni and staff to co-design solutions that better support our completers. And this is work that actually gave us a chance to enhance Calbright's own human-centered design practices, something that's kind of well on-brand for us, but also provided another opportunity for us to center around the voices of our learners. The insights that gleaned from these efforts help advance the work, but it's also a powerful validator of our work to date, including our latest work that we'll talk about with the student journey, with key objectives that are laser-focused on reducing stopouts, accelerating persistence and completion, and advancing positive career outcomes for our students, and this is important, in line with their goals, not our goals. Calbright can lean into meeting learners where they are with more personalized supports, more curated learning experiences, and that's what this Journey 2.0 is about. It is centering around the learners, and in doing so, really the main reason that we feel we're helping define that higher education landscape across California, the new frontier of what that can be. And this work is also timely and critical for our state. Many of you may have read from a new report from Gallup and the College Futures Foundation that talked a lot about the reasons students consider stepping out, stopping out, or dropping out. And it talked about a third, over a third of Californians' students considering stopping out over the past six months. And what we've learned over the course of these five years especially is the why of these learners, because it is the understanding of learner needs that Calbright has been built on, and it's the ever-growing knowledge base that Calbright evolves on to surface continuously new solutions that are increasingly responsive to what is ultimately changing in the realm of the needs of our learners. So as a flexible, supportive, public option serving 7,500 adult learners, 90% of whom are over the age of 25, Calbright is uniquely positioned to change these statistics and to really lift up the learnings and the solutions that are necessary to effectively support working-age Californians who are underserved and provide job-ready talent for employers. So as we move forward with our new student journey, expanded work-based learning opportunities, and continue to rigorously measure our impact, our goal is clear: to deliver transformative outcomes for adult learners and to contribute to shaping the future of higher education. I want to thank everyone for their continued support and leadership as we advance on this mission, and that concludes my remarks.
Thank you for that. Next, we'll be moving to closed session. We have three items for closed session. Item 2.1 is Comforts with Labor Negotiators. That's under Government Code Section 54957.6. The agency-designated representative is Joseph Bremgartner, and the employer organization is Calbright Faculty Association. Item 2.2 is Comforts with Labor Negotiators, Government Code Section 54957.6. The agency-designated representative is Joseph Bremgartner. The employer organization is California School Employees Association. And then item 2.3 is Public Employee Performance Evaluation, under Government Code Section 54957 Subsection B, which is the President and Chief Executive Officer. So are there any public comments on the closed session items?
Vice President Rawlings, we have two public comments. The first one is from Cindy Carney. Cindy, please use three minutes for your public comment.
Thank you. Good morning, President Aguinaldo, Vice President Rawlings, and members of the board. On behalf of the Calbright Faculty Association, I want to thank the Board of Trustees and the Calbright Administration for working with us to conclude bargaining and reach an agreement during a time of significant fiscal challenge. We recognize the difficult financial pressures facing the college and remain deeply committed to Calbright's mission and students' success, and we also appreciate the recognition that faculty already carry so much. This contract values the work of faculty and respects us as professionals. As the college continues to explore funding, we look forward to continued collaboration in finding reasonable, equitable solution that values and respects faculty and supports our students. Thank you.
Thank you. The next public comment is from Ashley Odell. Ashley, you have three minutes.
Thank you so much. Good morning, members of board. My name is Ashley Odell, and I'm the Lead Faculty for the Career Readiness Department, teaching durable skills and job search. I'm one of the inaugural faculty and have been with Calbright for over five years. I'm deeply dedicated to the college's goals and our students, and I'm here today to respectfully urge you to vote yes on the proposed faculty contract with the Calbright Faculty Association. This agreement represents not just many months of negotiation, it represents a shared commitment to the success of Calbright College, its mission, and, most importantly, its students. A ratified contract will provide stability, clarity, and fairness for faculty, which in turn strengthens our ability to serve and support working adult learners across California. We want to thank the college for respecting and supporting the work of faculty. Approving this contract is a crucial step in moving Calbright forward. I sincerely hope you'll join us in that progress by voting yes. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for that. Looks like we had it scheduled, our closed session scheduled for an hour and a half. I think we'll actually be able to get that to 45 minutes, so we'll expect to be back here in 45 minutes. Thanks, everyone. All right, we're back from closed session, and there is no report out for closed session items, so that moves us on to the consent agenda, and that moves to Section 3 of the agenda. Do any trustees wish to remove an item from the consent agenda for discussion or separate vote? All right. Seeing none, is there any public comment on the consent agenda?
There is no public comment.
All right. Then I'll entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
Move a...
So moved.
Move on the consent agenda.
Move by Haynes and second by Adu. All right. Please call the roll.
Love, adieu. Maria Blaze.
Present.
Adrian Brown. Lillian Corral.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Pam Haynes.
Aye.
Harry Legrand.
Aye.
Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Syrian Villa Vicencio.
Aye.
Joseph Williams.
Aye.
Motion carries, Vice President Rawlings.
All right. Thank you for that. That moves us to the actioned agenda. Item 4.1, Ratification of Collective Bargaining Agreement with the Calbright Faculty Association, CFA, and that's presented by Joseph Bremgartner, Vice President of Human Resources. Joe, take it away.
Good morning, Vice President Rawlings and members of the board. Today, I'm presenting you with a tentative agreement for the successor agreement with Calbright Faculty Association. This tentative agreement is the result of negotiations with the Calbright Faculty Association and will replace the inaugural collective bargaining agreement, which expired on June 30th of 2025. Today, we ask for your consideration to ratify this collective bargaining agreement with the Faculty Association and in appreciation for their collaboration and partnership throughout the process.
Move approval. All right. Any trustee discussion?
Second.
Second.
Okay, so I heard Williams and then Haynes, I think, right? Beat you to it. Just adding a quick public comment on this, or a board comment on this, really appreciate the partnership we've had with CFA, Cindy Carney and her team, clearly really thoughtful about, you know, where we're at in our transition and as we come to the end of our startup period. And so this kind of agreement, I think, dealing with just real structural items within the contract without, you know, putting a burden, a financial burden on the college is, I think, really helpful as we go and we figure out the next stages and transition out of our startup period into a bigger growth phase. So I really appreciate all the work that the CFA team and the district team did on this work. All right. With that, we have a motion and a second. Please call the roll. Oh, yes.
Is there always a call for public comment?
Oh, yes, please. Thank you. Public comment on this item.
There is no public comment.
All right. Thanks for the reminder. All right. And then, Member Adu, did you have a comment? Or no? No, you didn't. Okay. Okay, all right. So with that, please call the roll.
Love, adieu.
Aye.
Maria Blaze.
Aye.
Adrian Brown. Lillian Corral.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Pam Haynes.
Aye.
Harry Legrand.
Aye.
Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Syrian Villa Vicencio.
Aye.
Joseph Williams.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. Thank you for that. That moves us on to item 4.2, Authorization, Authorized President/CEO to Approve 2025-26 Fiscal Year Support Expenditures. And for that, we have Ed Lee, Chief Financial Officer. Ed?
Hey. Good morning, Vice President Rawlings, Calmer President, CEO Menon, and members of the board. I'm here to present item 4.2. This is a revisitation of an item from last month. Just want to share a little bit of context, but in order to avoid disruption of college business operations and ensure the continuity of the service for the college during the course of the year, we're presenting to the board a list of vendors that support the college from an operational standpoint with a not-to-exceed of $3.8 million. The criteria of the vendors listed in the attachment are that it is part of Calbright's operational infrastructure to support students, bid requirements being met, contracted arrangement maybe, we'll call it kind of non-traditional, either through a cooperative agreement, such as college buys, an online terms-of-service agreement, or irregular invoicing patterns throughout the year, and also anticipated expenditures during the course of the year greater than $100,000, and also inclusion in the final adopted budget approved by the board in August. Should any expenditures be anticipated being exceeded throughout the year, we will plan to bring those back to the board for review. Happy to answer any questions at this time.
All right. Any trustee discussion on this item? Any questions? All right. Seeing none, is there any public comment on this item?
Vice President Rawlings, there's one public comment.
All right.
Although it does state it's for 4.2 contract expenses approval.
Oh, that would have been item 4.1, right?
No, this is 4.2.
Yeah, we're on 4.2.
This is 4.2, but it's just confusing because it says contract expenses approval. This is from Mike Palmary. He says, "Good morning, board members. Thank you for your service to Calbright. As Calbright navigates a precarious financial position, I urge you to take a moment of public engagement on the sizable commitments before you so the community can understand the rationale behind them. Approving the expense report without discussion risk undermining public trust and raises serious questions about fiscal oversight. While this is not a request for line item scrutiny, it's an ask for the board to engage more closely with the scale of the expenses the college is choosing to take on." And then, oh, sorry, now he says it's for item 5.3. So if we can wait for the next public comment for item 5.3.
So hold it for 5.3. All right. Thank you for that. All right. So for item 4.2, is there any other comment?
No.
No?
There is no public comment.
All right. Then I'll entertain a motion. Okay. Move by Adu.
Second.
By Villa Vicencio. All right. Please call the roll.
Love, adieu.
Aye.
Maria Blaze.
Aye.
Adrian Brown.
Aye.
Lillian Corral.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Pam Haynes.
Aye.
Harry Legrand.
Aye.
Syrian Villa Vicencio.
Aye.
And Joseph Williams.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I'm also an aye.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
That's all right. Thanks. All right. And that gets us to item 5.1, our information and reports, starting us off, Engaging Calbright Alumni Through Human-Centered Design. That is with Don Orth. So, Don.
Thank you. I'll wait for the presentation. Great. Thanks so much. And actually, and Bin Do is joining me for this. Good morning, Vice President Rawlings and members of the board. I'm Don Orth, Vice President of Student Services and Success, and I'm excited to be here today with my colleague Bin Do to provide you with an update on an in-house human-centered design project facilitated by our very own design innovation team. This work has been a close collaboration between economic and business development, student success, research and development, and the alumni community. As always, and especially when we're exploring something new, it's important to center on our mission, why we're here, and who we serve. I'm not going to read this out. I think we're all familiar with it, but it is always nice to ground ourselves here. So remember Brenda. I'd like to bring her back to in front of us. She's been a caregiver, and actually, you can click for, I think, the, there you go. She's been a caregiver to her children, a mom, and while also working two jobs to provide financial support for her family. Until she found Calbright College, she didn't consider higher education as something for her, but Calbright's flexible approach empowered Brenda to complete our CRM program. So she's a Calbright alumni now, and we are committed to supporting our alumni as well as our current students. So what is available to her and her peers today? Can you click, please? So there's actually quite a bit of outreach and engagement we initiate with our alumni. We send a monthly newsletter that includes an alumni spotlight, work and work spotlights, and other opportunities to connect. We host an alumni LinkedIn group. We hold alumni events, and a lot more. Now, while these opportunities to engage were designed by our faculty and staff, who know our students very well, we wanted to know more about what our alumni wanted. So we began the alumni program project with the question you saw on the previous slide: How might we support the personal and professional development of Calbright alumni? And now I'd love to pass to my colleague Bin Do to share this work.
So good morning. Good morning, Vice President Rawlings and other members of the Board of Trustees. I'm Bin Do, Vice President of Research and Development, and I'm delighted to be here to share with you Calbright's human-centered design approach and how we used it over the past few months in our cross-functional work. If we look at the next slide, you'll see Calbright's human-centered design process, and as you know, it's a philosophy that centers people, communities, as experts to identify their challenges and to think collaboratively about solution options. It flips the institutional mindset on its head. Instead of the college and staff and faculty possessing all knowledge, we engage with our students to learn from their experiences and their perspectives and act on their demonstrated We began our research project the following way. We trained our team members to interview over 20 alumni, one-on-one. These conversations were held with alumni who completed programs between 2020 and 2024, representing all programs that Calbright offered in that timeframe. Furthermore, we interviewed almost 30 employees across the college to get their own perspective on the current student experience. Following our framework for innovation, we relied on a variety of different methods in order to understand and build empathy for our alumni community. We began by assessing our current knowledge to help inform the objectives and to structure these interviews. And as you can see on the screen, we use a variety of different activities to engage with our community. First, we did a gallery walk. We leverage asynchronous way for the working group to assess and react to the current knowledge from a variety of different sources, including aggregated student data, ongoing alumni surveys, and learnings from prior research initiatives. We also looked at the alumni journey. This was a way that we use a shared process of outlining the key steps and moments, looking at the emotion of someone who, of how they might experience the journey while moving through a particular situation. We conducted interviews, one-on-one conversations with people to hear their stories and experiences and understand their perspective in their own words. And also, we created this opportunity to do a collaborative data sort. We engage in this group activity where cross-functional employees work together to organize direct quotes from the alumni into themes in order to reveal insights and opportunities. So through these alumni interviews, we were able to find a lot of rich findings. It took a group of 16 employees to organize over 650 data points into cohesive themes. And parallel to this work, alumni created their own journey maps, some of which you could see on this slide. I know it's really tiny, but you could see kind of the sticky notes and all of the journey points that they mapped out, and they represent a variety of different ways our completer experienced life after Calbright. At the conclusion of all this extensive work, over 10 areas of opportunities emerged, and some of the interesting learnings emerged from this. And while students really liked our flexible model that we offered, we also found that this self-place online model can leave some students feeling potentially a little isolated, both personally and professionally. So our next step was really to think boldly and freely about the specific areas of opportunity and how to bridge the isolation our alumni's signal that they could have felt. The working groups got to work and drafted very quickly over 30 different approaches to create community and a sense of belonging at any point of this alumni experience. They, we developed these specific criteria based on the findings that you saw earlier and evaluated in the earliest iterations. After that, we validated the most successful ideas with alumni and staff and prioritized four out of the 10 areas. So first, we found connecting with students, connecting students to real-world experience. Number two, helping students build relationships with one another as well as professionals in their field. Three, expanding their understanding and insights of their chosen careers. And four, celebrating completion. So our alumnis have made it really clear to us that they need opportunities to apply their learnings in the real world. They have shared with us that they know their employers value work experience, and students emphasize that the type of jobs that they are seeking is really at an advantage when they are looking for work in the field. And as many of you already know, Calbright offers Excel internships, giving them a chance to work alongside us, and many of you have also heard about the Career Bridge pilot, which connects our alumni and our students, or I'm sorry, alumni and students which connects our alumni and our students, or I'm sorry, alumni and students with remote internships. At a conceptual level, we're really eager to continue to design these skill sprints, which may be modeled after additional programs such as a hackathon-style engagement, where teams could work to solve real problems in a short time. When we asked Calbright alumni what would have made their transition into workforce smoother, they were really clear. They said, we need real-time experience and more chances to prove our skills and more ways to connect with one another and potential employers. In our conversations with alums, we also found many of them completed their programs with limited community engagement, so leaving them really a desire for stronger networks, something crucial for landing a job with one's growing career. So alumnis mentioned to us, they really needed, they really needed networks, something crucial, and having confidence in the strength of their own professional networks. They shared that they wanted more structured, inclusive opportunities to build these relationships and wanted ones that led to more jobs and mentorships. So recognizing these challenges to build networks in a self-paced virtual environment, we're committed to really trying to build a program that could provide our students with practical guidance, peer support, and scaffolded activities, as well as live engagement online and possibly in-person activities as well. So through our interviews and validation workshops, we learned that alumni have varying levels of success, of, excuse me, of access to industry information. And we know that Calbright actually holds a wealth of activity relevant to knowledge, relevant knowledge amongst our staff. At times, it could be siloed within different divisions. So how might we be able to share our internal knowledge about industry in more methodical ways, both with alumni and staff? We believe that Calbright can provide these practical, up-to-date insights with its internal stakeholders. And in our engagements with alumni, we mentioned they shared that completing Calbright certificates, potentially online, could be anticlimactic and express a desire to celebrate their achievement with others. This has been in the evolving conversation amongst our team. And the number of completers have, you know, as they've been increasing, we're now able to think about how we could build a more robust indicator to mark these momentous occasions in their journey. And beyond recognizing students' achievements, this serves as a critical touch point to highlight the resources that are continuing to be available to alumni, such as these work-based learning opportunities, employment opportunities, and relationship-building opportunities, including industry-specific events. So through all of these engagements with alumni, they continually stress to us the importance of integrating opportunities for connections into their programs themselves. Many expressed the need for experienced relationships and insights during their Calbright program so that they could more quickly navigate relationships and transitions into their new opportunities following completion. And as we understand the effectiveness, we will continue to evaluate and iterate on these pilots shared today to meet the diverse needs of Calbright community. So kind of going back to Brenda from the beginning, and again, Brenda was our students that many of you might have been familiar from many years ago. How do we connect Brenda, who is now our alumni, and Mariah, our current student, who you met in March, in meaningful ways that are responsive to their needs? We do hope that Mariah's experience can be improved by the experience of our alumni. And Journey 2.0 can be further strengthened by these learnings. As we continue to iterate and move forward with the feedback from our students and stakeholders, we can, we will be able to, to move and validate some of the programs that we are already doing. As you heard earlier, some of the work that we are already doing, such as the Career Bridge and Excel programs, directly align and are validated through our learnings. And for some of these other areas, our Student Life and Alumni Relations Team have already started working on building special opportunities, such as completers' celebrations to commemorate their achievement across platforms. This team is also working cross-functionally with the Career Services and Learning and Instruction Teams on a networking program responsive to the alumni feedback and iterating on services that align to what we know our learners need. And at the end of the day, our North Star remains the same. We're ensuring that we align to our strategic support pillars for supporting, to support increasing a sense of belonging, integrating career preparation, and personalize and scaffold every student's journey, leading them to a successful future. So, thank you.
All right. Is that it?
Yes.
Okay. So I need trustee discussion on this item. Any questions from the board? Yeah, Member Brown?
So, as someone who really struggled during quarantine, being fully online, because I'm a very social person, and yet, we found ways to have, and I even helped host a worldwide social event on Zoom during quarantine, and it was really fun, really interesting. One of the little sessions, it was like a little worldwide session. Somebody took us on a bike ride through their town, and we all watched, you know? There's so many interesting things that can be done, so I'm really excited to hear that you're talking about created that connectedness for completers and that it's not going to be an isolated experience. So I encourage you to invite us. I would be happy to put on a cap and gown for whatever you all are doing and hop on Zoom.
There we go.
I'd love to celebrate with our students and meet them and hear from them. So whatever you come up with, or if you need help with it, let us know. I'm good at facilitating online events.
I would say I know that Hildy is interested in the same kind of thing, so we've had that discussion already. Yeah, it's great. All right, Member Vivek Vasencio.
I just want to concur with Member Brown's suggestion. That would be amazing in participating on a virtual commencement for our Calbright students and for us to celebrate with them. I wanted to, first of all, thank you for the presentation. I believe this is so important to keep our alumni connected with our institutions. They are a wonderful resource, and ultimately, our alumni, a good number of them come back, and they support current students. And so hopefully, that's being obviously thought about, and perhaps you could expand on that. But I'd love to also suggest, and I'm sure this may have bubbled up in your surveys from students, have you thought about regional-based alumni meetups? Where, again, that person, that in-person connection is still very, very important. And since Calbright has students, I believe there was just that one county, right? That's Calbright's, if my memory serves me correctly, Alpine County. So hopefully, we can, you know, enroll a student there. But, but since Calbright serves students from all around the city of California, there may be some opportunities to, to create again that space where they can, in fact, meet together regionally. And I think that would be so beneficial for our students. Just tossing that out there. Thank you.
Can I, in addition to everything that the team does, one of the most important roles that we've played is in supporting the building of student community and student leadership. And I love that idea, and you'll probably see in the report from our student body president, Deb Hemingway, a lot of the activities that the student government itself is leading and providing leadership for. A lot of it has to do with how we foster connection and community, peer-to-peer. And so 100% on board for that, including opportunities that folks are finding to meet each other in the digital setting, but also in person.
That's right. All right, Member Williams.
Yeah, and I think it's a great idea. I'm not sure where the state is with it, but do Calbright, does Calbright students have access to College Core? It's the American equivalent at the state level, because it's a great way to do what he suggested, to bring them together. And I know Governor Newsom has put a great deal of resources in College Core. And so it's a cert, it follows the national service models, and it's a service-learning kind of situation for students. So just wondered if Calbright students get access to it.
I mean, there's nothing prohibiting access to it, but it's, we don't have an intentional channel partnership yet. But interested in that, and also interested, those experiences in leadership and volunteerism also have tangible skills that can be transcribed and honored and highlighted by institutions. And we're looking at the way, at that aspect of it. So how do we take out-of-class learning, including the work that folks do in community, the work that folks do in spaces of volunteer or otherwise leadership? How does that translate to the story that they tell about themselves when they're trying to reach their goal, whether it's an employment goal or whether it's a community-specific goal?
Any other comment? All right. Any public comment on the item?
There is no public comment.
All right. So having no public comment, that moves us to item 5.2, Student Journey 2.0 Update: Journey Starter and Staff Portal. So back to you, Don.
Great. Thank you. Good morning. I don't know if I have to introduce myself again, but I'll do it just in case. Good morning, Vice President Rawlings and members of the board. I'm Don Orth, VP of Student Services and Success. And for this presentation, I'm joined by my esteemed colleague Vivek Vias. Today, we'll share some updates on Student Journey 2.0, which we introduced for you for the first time a few months ago. And at first, before I jump in, I'd really like to recognize the college-wide collaboration that has gone into developing the student journey, both the current one we have now and this next iteration. I think it's one of the, one of the things that makes Calbright really unique. We have this pretty amazing practice of working dynamically across divisions, and that allows us to be responsive to the changing needs and innovate new solutions quickly. Leadership from each team helps keep fidelity, a vision, and purpose. Project managers keeps these complex projects aligned and on task. And every member of our teams provide insights to the student experience, then bring best practices, expertise, and breathe life into the work to ultimately serve our students well. And as a reminder, Student Journey 2.0 is a comprehensive evolution of our current journey, focused on reducing stopouts, accelerating persistence and completion, and increasing positive career outcomes. And as Ben mentioned in the last presentation, we always come back and drive kind of any new support design with these strategic pillars. You can always, almost consider them design principles. And they're behind every support we offer students. We create a sense of belonging through relationships and community. We personalize and scaffold every student's journey based on their skills, needs, and goals. We integrate career preparation into learning to build skills, knowledge, and experiences. And we ensure operational efficiency to enable high-quality development at scale. And you can connect most of our initiatives and development on student support with one or, or all of these pillars. So before we dive in into recent developments, here's a high-level flow of student journey. The student journey begins with the program navigator, and this is conceptual. This is what it will be when it's completely rolled out. The student begins with the program navigator on our website, which helps them choose the program that best fits their goals. From there, they'll complete the CCC application and enter the Calbright Student Portal, where they can access orientation, complete the Journey Starter, which we're going to talk about today, to share their strengths and needs, and finalize an enrollment agreement that moves them into provisional enrollment. Then they begin their program with coursework shaped by what they already know. Along the way, they're supported academically by faculty and staff and provided a personalized scaffolding of holistic supports, including career preparation and work-based learning. When they complete their program, students are offported as alumni and step into a thriving network of opportunity and support through Calbright and its partners. So today, we're going to focus on the Journey Starter. New students now encounter the Journey Starter before onboarding, that live kind of entered, that first connection that students come in and every student meets with the enrollment services team to really be introduced and brought into Calbright. And the Journey Starter is a short set of academic and non-academic questions that allow us to personalize each student's Calbright experience. In this first version, the one that we've launched, responses place students into Level 1, low needs, Level 2, medium needs, or Level 3, high needs, while also flagging specific supports, such as digital literacy, English language learning, or basic needs. Together, these insights generate a tailored outreach and engagement plan, as well as a custom pace and progress timeline that breaks coursework into weekly assignments. And this is something you've heard over and over again and seen, just a really proven way to help students stay on track. At first glance, though, this idea of a Journey Starter, this idea of asking some questions, may seem like a simple survey. But the technical capabilities behind it and the infrastructure it enables are really powerful. And so I want to pass it to Vivek to kind of give you a little sneak peek about what it looks like and then kind of the power under the hood. So Vivek, pass to you.
Thank you, Don. Good morning, Vice President Rawlings and members of the Board of Trustees. I'm Vivek Vias, Chief Product Officer, Calbright College. And I'd like to talk a little bit about how the Student Journey 2.0 is delivered through our own homegrown student portal. The student portal has been designed, as you know, to serve as the primary vehicle for delivering the student experience. And this progression map here represents the steps in their journey. When learners first log in, they are prompted to change their program. Then they complete a brief intake comprising, comprising of academic and non-academic questions, aptly called Journey Starter, as Don mentioned. Now, here's where we've developed a backend model that takes all these answers as input and segments them into needs, low, medium, and high. And it also flags specific needs like digital literacy, English language learner needs, and basic needs. Overtracks progress and unlocks the next step, which is onboarding step, which the student can join from within the portal, makes it very easy for the student to join it. In this session, oh, can we advance the slide, please?
That's, that's the one.
So I, this, this is the, this is the progression map that I was referring to. As you can see, starts with a program acknowledgement. They get a chance to change their program if needed. And then where you see the green box is the Journey Starter, which is where they answer those questions. And as soon as they complete those answers, the backend engine takes all that into account and through an algorithm, which has been designed and developed by our own technology team in collaboration with the Student Success Team, it categorizes or segments the students into high, medium, and low needs. And so once they progress further, they join the onboarding session, where the students are introduced to Calbright and finalize the enrollment agreement. For high-need students, the portal issues a scheduling link and follow-up reminders to ensure that the required one-on-one session with success counselors is booked for all high-need students. And the counselors provide ongoing guidance, including work-life balance, program support, and career prep, and connect learners to resources in these one-on-ones. All of these steps ensure that the students begin with the right resources and the right level of support, setting them up for success. And as you will see shortly, we're already seeing strong results in the data. Next slide, please. This is the student's view of the journey map in the student portal. And as you can see, the portal guides the student through each step of the journey and unlocks the next step after the preceding required step completed by the student. Next slide, please. This is the students', so once, once they see, once they click on the Journey Starter icon, the portal launches a friendly multiple-choice intake that's easy to navigate and select answers for. Next slide. Once they've completed answering all those questions, they see a summary of their answers. They also have an opportunity to edit them prior to submission. And at the end of this questionnaire, after they have answered all the questions and made any necessary edits, a congratulatory message confirms completion. Behind the scenes at this point, the Calbright assessment engine analyzes responses to identify specific needs and classify the support level, low, medium, high. This algorithm is based on an extensive rubric, which assigns weights and scores to questions and has been designed collaboratively by our teams. Next. Next. Over on the faculty side, we have created a centralized portal called the Staff Portal that serves the needs of our faculty and staff. It connects them to the right tools, data and processes in one place. The Staff Portal is a single, secure home for staff workflows. And one of those workflows, as seen here, is the counselor view, which is updated by this assessment engine and shows the calculated support level he intake needs at a glance, along with other student data, enabling staff to prioritize outreach and personalize support for students, especially those who need it the most. The Staff Portal also gives our staff a view of assigned students, allowing them to filter based on many criteria, some of which are progress status and needs level, to quickly spot who needs support most and get the data that they need to support those students. Now, all of this is powered by this remarkable backend engine built by our very own technology team. And on the next slide, I'd like to share some of the work that goes on behind the scenes to enable all of this. So over the past two years, Calbright's technology team has built a secure, scalable cloud and data backbone that makes applications like the Student Journey 2.0 possible. This modular infrastructure supplies the data plumbing for our apps, empowers smart algorithms that flag needs early and trigger targeted support, such as in this assessment engine. It also provides the analytics to measure outcomes, identify what's working and also what isn't, and make timely adjustments. I'm happy to report that since the launch of the Journey Starter only a few weeks ago, we have processed over 1,500 intake assessments with zero bugs or downtime. This is exceptional reliability for a release of the scope. Our application design is firmly grounded in the student experience. Intake is smooth and resumable, questions adapt by program, and each learner gets a personalized pace and timeline with clear milestones and next steps. For staff, insights scale through role-based dashboards and a unified student view through the Staff Portal, which is also our homegrown application, that highlights who needs outreach and why. So teams can quickly connect learners to tutoring, counseling and other required resources. I'll now hand it back to Don to walk you through the data that clearly shows that the Student Journey 2.0 implementation done by our teams is hitting the mark. Back to you, Don.
Great. Thank you, Vivek. So of course, and actually, can you just go back? We're just going to stay on that slide for a second. Thank you. You know, the the work that has been done here, both by the technology team and the and the collaboration kind of with other division teams has been really incredible. And it's beautiful. It's a really seamless experience for students as they enter Calbright. There are some really powerful tools now for our faculty and staff. And so and so those things are important. But ultimately, you know, what we care most about, is it helping? Is it really actually empowering the student to do better, to be more successful? So I want to talk a little bit about what we're seeing right now, early, early days. And then what we, you know, what we're definitely looking forward to in the future. So since the launch of the Journey Starter in June, more than 1,000 students, and Vivek mentioned 1,500 students have completed it without, and they like to say, and definitely, definitely admire admirable, a single bug or or any second of downtime. So that's super powerful and a credit to the infrastructure we're building. And that I'll just double down and say that, you know, the quality of the infrastructure impacts the student experience, and that is what we care about most. So this this data I'm going to show you next is based on the first 1,000 students that have entered, that have taken the intake assessment. And this chart shows that first 1,000 students distributed across those different levels. You'll find and see that most students are placed in Level 1, which is low needs, a small number placed into Level 2, medium needs, and the second-largest group, still relatively small, into Level 3, high needs. And those high needs are often flagged because of basic needs, a need for more digital literacy or a need for language support. So currently, what you need to know is that Level 3 students, those highest-need students, are assigned to success counselor and encouraged to schedule an appointment. They are not required at this point. We are strongly recommending they meet with the counselor for that extra support and guidance. Level 2 students are receive proactive outreach and support from our persistence team. And Level 1 students are continue to be offered the standard support services. Okay, and click. So before launching the Journey Starter, we did collect basic needs information in an onboarding poll during onboarding and using Zoom. And when counselors followed up with those students who identified a basic needs, only 23% of the students scheduled an appointment. Since introducing the Journey Starter, that number has jumped to 87%. So that is a huge, huge increase. 87% of our students now in the same category have scheduled appointments with counselors. And why does this matter? Our hypothesis is that students who engage with Calbright Students Support Services perform better. While it's still early to measure progress after the Journey Starter launch, we did run a short pilot before we launched the Journey, the Journey Starter, and this is what we saw. Okay, and click. In a pilot with IT support students, Level 1 and 2 students made about 5% of the progress, 5% of progress in nine weeks in their program, while Level 3 students, who scheduled an appointment with a counselor, averaged 18% complete. This is over three times higher and faster in progress. This shows that students who engage with supports do better. And our long-term goal is to move from these three broad levels, 1, 2 and 3, to fully personalized pathways. So I just want to pause here again. The significant increase in student progress from that more engaged opportunity is is pretty remarkable. Okay, and click. And here's the thing, we are just getting started. Really quickly, I'd give you a kind of a peek into what's next and apologize for the business here, but we are anxious to build this out. The Program Navigator that you've heard, a tool that helps students identify the best-fit programs right at the start of their journey. Modular asynchronous orientation, this will be a flexible onboarding that gives every student a clear understanding of their program and the full range of supports available at Calbright. A dynamic journey map is a visual representation of each student's pace and progress, showing where they've been, where they are and where and what's ahead, like a map that guides their path. And then AI support tools, always available support to meet students on their schedules and free up more time for deeper engagement with our faculty and staff. And all of this work that I mentioned is currently in development. Okay. And I believe we have a few minutes for questions that we'd love to entertain or discuss and certainly comments. What I what I will also say is that it's really important. The more we know our students, the better we can serve them. And the more our students feel known, I think, the more they engage. So part of this kind of momentum behind Journey 2.0 is helping us know our students better so they feel known and that we can offer supports that are relevant, so that we are not putting everything at everyone, but really serving students and creating those personalized pathways to meet students where they are and to support their success at a pace that they are that they kind of can manage. Okay, with that, I'll stop and open it up to questions.
All right. Just one quick comment for me.
Can you do one thing off the top? One thing is, you know, we talked a lot about all of the folks that were involved across the college in the build of this. But I think what's most important is the intentionality with which this was built. So everybody is watching the frontiering technology in this space. We have intentionally and purposely built this with the human in the loop. So understanding how do we actually supercharge the human connection and touchpoints that we think are principally critical in education, the core of what we do, the heart of what we do. So I just want to highlight that because I think we didn't press on that specifically. But that that's a that's a value. That's a that's a thing we believe in. And I think, you know, even as the tech gets better and even in places and situations where the tech, in some ways, quote unquote, outperforms humans, our choices to keep humans at the center of this becomes even more critically differentiating and powerful.
And I would say, kind of in addition to that, it's very clear to me in both 5.1 and 5.2, these items, that the people that work most closely with our students are designing the systems and the approaches that serve those students. And then we're building the technology to serve that purpose. And so the mission-driven approach that our employees have collectively now is is coming through the technology design. And that then in turn will serve our students and serve our employees and keep them mission-driven and keeping the students and the learners really at the center of everything we're doing. So just absolutely impressed with everything you guys have done so far. So let's go Member Haynes and then Villa Vicencio and then Member Williams.
So thank you so much for this presentation. I do have a question. And I absolutely agree with everything that's been said so far. We are now in the process of trying to adapt CCC Apply. And and it's and it's still at the front door of everything that sort of moves beyond that. I just want to make certain that Calbright has an opportunity to keep an eye on or does it have an opportunity to keep an eye on that progress? I remember when the the current CCC Apply, that front door left about 19% of African-American applicants. They never completed it. And and while I know it's going to get better, I just want to make certain that those who, especially especially Calbright, because so much is driven by technology, that front door is still critically important. And I want to make certain that maybe there's a way of ensuring that some of the lessons learned by Calbright is is in that pathway for what is going to still be CCC Apply.
I'm going to make a global point on this because it's not just CCC Apply. It's any system-wide infrastructure that colleges rely on or need. What we can talk about in the lessons of the way that we took on the design approach is largely the fact that we've built flexibility into the technology infrastructure. So what that means is, as we change, as we adapt, after as we get more precise on efficacy, we don't have to rebuild technology. We get we have a faster time to innovation and improvement. Now, that can be true for every college in the system with the right central infrastructure. So the thing that most institutions look for, and in fact, like when I spoke with my colleagues in the past about CCC Apply, a lot of them talked about the types of challenges they were facing that prevented them from providing more customization, sort of more engagement in the enrollment process, which all of them can innovate around based on, you know, the specifics of their offerings and their needs. And that's kind of the the vision that I know that Chancellor Christian and others have is that how do we actually leverage system infrastructure to make it easier for institutions to continuously innovate? So I think there's a lot to learn from this specific build, but mostly it's there's an important takeaway that we should constantly be checking on as these projects get explored, designed and adapted. This is different than the committee-style ways or the bureaucratic ways a lot of public-sector tech projects go through implementation. We have to be looking at it from the perspective of both students' end-users and institutions and all their component parts as end-users as well. And and that is, you know, there are absolutely design approaches that service that. So I absolutely think it's possible. I think it is hopeful and aspirational and the vision that's been created for the system. And we are, as always, at the ready to provide, you know, kind of our input or shared perspectives or learnings on that. And and mostly, the thing we check for is to make sure that there's not blockers for us or for other institutions on being able to innovate and customize in the ways we need to 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 reach and become closer to our learners, like moving out of the bureaucratic mindset and into the mindset of flexibility.
Villa Vicencio.
I appreciate the the discussion and the comments the president men mentioned. Yes, I think customization, flexibility, trying to meet where our students, where they are, is so important. And I think that this onboarding process is really part of guided pathways, too. And having our conversations here, the Calbright's onboarding process is a little bit different from your traditional or traditional, you know, community college institutions, because you onboard them, to my understanding, at different times. And so that makes it doubly challenging. But again, that flexibility offers our students the opportunity to to get their education. I really am appreciative of the presentation, as well as the the breakdown of low needs, medium needs and high needs. And I was wondering if you could also clarify for me what the criteria was used to to break that down. I'd just be curious, the metric that you're you're using there. And to Member Haynes' comment about, I think, aligned with this with data disaggregation. And, you know, is that being done in this case? So we can identify, obviously, where those equity gaps are, particularly when we're serving our disproportionately impacted students. And so, yes, I think this is very innovative. I think this is something, again, that Calbright can offer our system, become better, right, in onboarding our students, which obviously is so important because that's the start to their academic journey. Thank you.
I love that. I'll hand it over to Don to talk about the specifics of the categorizations. But the most important thing to know about that is it's an it's an initial identification. So we will anticipate kind of movement and also beyond 3, you know, a hyper customized next stage of this. So this is not a permanent structure that we'll have for the next five years. This is an initial way of calibrating existing population of learners and connecting them to the service level that we think will best set them up for success. And as we're tracking, we learn very quickly whether that needs to be adjusted, whether servicing needs to go up or down. And students can also self-select to engage more. So so think about it as a as very much a moving, moving activity, but but Don, go ahead.
Yeah, no, I think that's that's a great reminder. And that, you know, when you saw that chart, and I don't know if you want it, well, we're not sharing, but you saw that chart, most students identified through those questions that we had as Level 1, very low needs. Now, is is that true? Does that actually speak to, does that match those students with actually the services we offer? I think there is more to learn there. So like Ajita said, this is kind of the first iteration, and we wanted to keep it super simple. And to address your question directly, what we've identified that kind of brings a student into the higher-need space are some questions about digital literacy. We know that digital literacy is super important for success. You know, if a student has never learned online before or they really struggle with basic tools, we feel like that is something that it would be helpful to address early on. If students have language, language needs, language learning needs, that is a place that we want to kind of support early on. And then basic needs, you know, things like housing insecurities, food insecurities, things that really can take students off the track, off track and prevent success. Though that's an area also that we wanted to address early on. So that's kind of basic, basically what flags a higher-need student. But also, like Ajita said, there is a lot of nuance to build in here as we as we grow and learn from what we have now. So is that helpful?
That's great. I love that we've built such a flexible process that that allows us to do this work and iterate the way that we're going to need to as we as we learn more. That's great. We have Member Williams and Member LaGrande.
So I'm trying to make my comment make sense. But like as a trustee of a local district with one college that had turned 100 years old next year and then another that is in the mid-60s, you don't get to see the the buildup of student-facing software or interfaces. So I appreciate being able to see that. And I'm glad you all asked all of the student-related comments. And so I've been talking a lot about how to develop local revenue or additional revenue sources and be less state-dependent. And so my question is around who owns the IP of this kind of stuff? And then, like, how does what's being built compare to what's commercially available on the market? And then, like, can this be sold to other states? Can it be sold to our colleges? And can Calbright, you know, when you look at our state universities, a lot of them have for-profit enterprises housed on their campuses and inside their institutions, and they do a lot of strategic stuff. And so we we I've been trying to talk about this in, you know, my local district at least, like how to develop other revenue streams. And then can this compete? other revenue streams. And then, can this compete with what's already on the market is what my real question is. And then, does Calbright have the ability to, you know, engage in that kind of way? Or is, are we prohibited?
I'm going to separate out, because there's like so many tentacles on that. But I'll start with this. I think model-first always. So, we can talk about revenue or how we make things sustainable over time to grow and expand its impact to the broader share of learners we need to have. But let's talk about in the technology space, who has ownership over data? Because right now, to your point, a lot of what's being produced is in private data sets in black boxes and not built for public benefit. What we have done here is built an asset for public benefit. And this is critically important. Very few states, very few systems and institutions are thinking about it this way. There's some great work that Chancellor King out of SUNY is thinking about. How do we hold and retain in this environment our community members' data in the public trust? And that is part of why we didn't seek to build this with a commercial application. This is our infrastructure. This is the management of our data. All of the privacy-related protections and responsibilities that we have as institutions, we hold responsibility for. So, this to me, I sound emphatic, because I am emphatic. I heard Dr. C. from Berkeley's Play Labs, who, you know, runs the nonprofit side of that, the reason they intentionally build it in the nonprofit space. Everyone is grabbing data out there on the commercial side for profit and commercial use, which may or may not build good technology to serve our learners. We hope it does, and we certainly are, we can't build everything ourselves in terms of what exists. So, those partnerships are critically important. But the visibility that we need to have, the ownership and the management of our own data information, our intelligence, our insights, what we know about our learner, that is an institutional responsibility. And that's one that we take very seriously, and holding it in the public space is going to be critically important. So, first order in any place who's moving in this direction, I would urge you to get in order the house, you know, what we would call like AI-ready, and this is some work we're doing with AQL Labs, who's advising us, Merced, Miracosta, and Long Beach around kind of that AI readiness infrastructure, is to look at your technology architecture, your data architecture, your sort of practices around engagement with technology providers. All of those things are the foundational steps to thinking about the models that we need to build. And the next thing I would say is, instead of thinking first about how do we capture revenue in a private marketplace, when we think about how many different ways do offerings need to be, alternative offerings do we need to have that meet specific needs of learners or communities? And so, if we approach the design, again, from that model-specific way, then we understand what is the real value, what is the real need. As we generate that, what makes something investment-worthy is continuously both the infrastructure we've set up, but the ability for us to deliver value, whether that's to the learner or to the employer or other things like that. And that's sort of, I think, the way we need to rethink, both in the local context, but mainly for anybody who's working in this space, and particularly for public institutions in this space. If we look at past adoption across higher ed, for example, in these types of things, we have seen them, they have fed us a lot of crap on the commercial side. There's probably a more eloquent way of saying that.
Alternative.
You know, and we were often left holding the bag, struggling to figure out how to make use or best of it, or how to make decisions around that. If you build the right foundation, then you are positioned to move differently and with a discerning eye towards the right vendors, the right partners, really probing and asking the questions and structuring agreements in ways that are beneficial to the institution and their students. And that has to be more of the focus than the shiny objects and the possibilities of tech that are out there and what is often capturing the airspace and the attention. We have to get down to the basics of how do we need to rebuild ourselves.
And for context, the reason why I brought it up in that kind of way is because we're just seeing revenue sources disappear for just random reasons. So, the HSI designation and the funding being pulled. And so, you know, that's the reason we've been, I've been asking our local district to really think about how do you have less dependency? You're not going to eliminate the state dependency, but how can you have other sources so then that way you can lessen the impact than when, you know, just randomly, you know, whole tranches of funding is just being pulled away?
Yeah.
All right. Member Legrand?
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. It was very informative. I'm actually glad to see the creativity that's being utilized to keep the connectivity of the students when they're in 1,000 different places. I mean, the fact that we're in 58 of the 59 counties is quite impressive. I would just say, kind of to Joseph's point and some of the others, I believe Calbright's going to have a lot of these innovative kind of approaches that maybe have some revenue generation as a future possibility. But I don't want to lose sight of the fact that we don't internally have the staffing to actually embark upon this whole entrepreneurialship role. And so, if we move down that path, that actually is going to be an additional cost for us, because you actually have somebody to own it. Our staff is already doing like 1,000 things, and to add one more piece to it, I think it's going to be the straw that break the camel's back. So, I'm all for the creativity and what this actually may provide for us in the future, but also don't want to lose sight of the fact, and a lot of our staff are criticizing that we're hiring so many consultants. But the reason why we do that is because we don't have the internal staffing in order to make that happen. And I think that's an important piece that we don't want to lose sight of. Sometimes you have to spend money to make money, but it's also easier to have one-time expenses as opposed to having an ongoing cost for staffing and salary issues based on increasing the number of folks you have on your payroll. So, again, kudos to you guys. I do think there's a lot of possibility for the way our bricks-and-mortar campuses approach this, and they will learn from us through this process. So, again, I just want to thank you for your efforts.
All right. Any other board comments? Yes, Member Brown?
I'm wondering if this could also be an area to do some intersegmental collaboration in ways that we haven't in the past. When you talked about sometimes what vendors tell us isn't actually what lines up with reality. So, I personally, having been a student in a California community college, a Cal State, and a UC, and having been an employee in a California community college, a Cal State, and a UC, I've interacted with lots of different technology in lots of different ways in all of those spaces, and I've seen homegrown technology solutions in each of those spaces. I've seen vendors tell one system, hey, this other system's already adopted our stuff. They use it, and we can do A to Z with it. But having personally worked in those places, I know that they actually only did A, B, C. And the rest of the alphabet, it was not being used for that purpose. We had other tools for those purposes. And then, after we get, you know, the product and the contract is signed, we get told we need to spend more money in order to get the rest of the letters. But really, they never even designed it in the first place. So,
Yes.
All that being said, I'm thinking about some of the homegrown systems I've seen. They have at UC San Diego for the employees, they have a really robust website. They call it Blink. That makes it really easy for employees to find their own professional development opportunities and things like that. I can tell you that at UCLA, they have a really great internal system. They've built for the students to navigate all of the resources that not only do the employees, the faculty, and how can I say this, the permanent staff, right, the full-time staff, but also the student workers who are peer mentors also have access to be able to work with their peers through the system. And at Cal State Fullerton, I can tell you that they had a really interesting homegrown advising technology system they were using. And that's just me knowing, because I've been in those places and spaces. But I'm wondering, have there been any conversations across these different systems between just the people that are building the homegrown systems? I don't know. Maybe some conference exists where this happens, but maybe not. And so, there could be an opportunity to just get the folks who actually get it, the tech folks, to just start having these, like I say, to get the co-parenting conversation to happen on some of this backend stuff. I don't know if that's going on, but if it isn't, can we add it to our wish list?
We can add it to a wish list. I think we're unlikely in an intersegmental way to add it quickly to the to-do list. And for any institution, especially community colleges in the system who have interacted in intersegmental processes, you can understand why. But I will say this, which is there are very few institutions that are thinking and building in this way across the country, and we are in network with those institutions. So, really being, understanding who's think about, thinking about, thinking about this from a user-driven perspective, who is thinking about this from a backend infrastructure perspective. So, you know, it is a smaller-than-we-would-like innovation community and network where the folks who are leading the front-end of holistic student supports and services, you know, lots of folks that Don has on speed dial for Vivek, similarly, on the technology and data infrastructure. But there are also a lot of ways in which we're pioneering a fair amount of this stuff. Like, I had this conversation with a couple of years ago now, when we made the switch to move from siloed tech operations into having more of a product and technology, you know, systems approach to it across the institution. And the conversation I got from a lot of the leading online already-scaled providers was like, wow, you're saving yourself a whole bunch of heartache and headache. And it was because, you know, there was a deficiency in product-led or product-driven methodological practices in the way we thought about how we offer, you know, services, learning experiences, all those things. And we knew we needed to have that internal flexibility to get more customized in the ways that we're now able to do after two years of building that way. So, I would say there is opportunity to share learnings, but also, and to learn from others. But when we think about time and effort, we think about the folks who are pushing frontier on this, and we think about what we can share out from, you know, from across those networks.
All right. So, we have Member Haynes, then Member Villa Vasencio.
So, this is a very interesting conversation that we're having. And first, and part of our challenge, and it could be an opportunity if we could see it that way, is that the 73 districts statewide is a confederation. There's an independence, because there's 73 boards of trustees that have very different perspectives. So, there's that one, even among ourselves. And then, which compounds this, California is one of the, we're on the front edge of so many things. That's the plus, that's the opportunity. However, California is one of the few states that does not have an intersegmental council.
There's no shield.
And so, therefore, while some may have remembered when there was one, I'm one of them, the reality is that you would have to have that building of trust and relationship that has grown over time to really begin to be thinking and have the possibility of doing it. So, there's some building blocks that are not there yet. And I don't, I'm an optimist, so I'll say my glass is half-full. But that's a hard nut to crack. And we see it, we see it with faculty across segments, we see it with a back laureate degree, we see it in so many ways, and we see it in processes that take, this is my opinion, the forever to get resolved. And it feels, even though it's a collegial issue, it's a collegial battle. And so, if we want to do those things, then those things have to be moved in a way that we solve for those issues.
All right. So, interesting conversation here. To address Member Brown's question whether there is a conference of intersegmental collaboration when it comes to creating low-cost resources for our students, there is. It's something called California Learning Labs. I had the privilege about a year ago to attend. It was actually led and moderated by now Senator Christopher Cabaldin. It is sponsored by the California Community College Foundation. And so, there is that, where we do meet with our faculty from all segments to share ideas here. So, there are these spaces where this is happening. And obviously, I think, I'm seeing President Menon nodding her head. So, I'm sure she's connected with Learning Lab and ways, again, to share, again, this broad information to elevate all of our students. So, thanks.
Yeah, I would say that. Lark Parks, who's kind of built and led that over the past several years, who used to work for Governor Brown, has done tremendous work with that. And it's very conveniently housed at the foundation, which is wonderful.
All right. Any other board comments? All right, seeing none. Then, let's take public comment.
There is no public comment.
All right. Thank you, Don, Ben, and Vivek. Like, these two items have been really informational, really encouraging for us and inspiring to us. And we know that all of your teams put in a ton of work getting us to this place. So, I'm really excited to see these students that go through this new journey starter and eventually end up in our alumni program. Will be really great ambassadors for us moving forward. So, I appreciate all the work you all did. Thank you for that. That gets us to item 5.3, Reports on Contracts and Purchases. For that, we have Ed Lee, Chief Financial Officer.
Good morning, again, board. And I'm here to present the standard report of the monthly contract and purchasing activity. These include expenditures from the month of August. Attachments to the agenda include a contracts report for August, which includes eight contracts and one corrected end date from a contract presented to the board in August. These agreements encompass a variety of necessary work related to program development, technology support and development, strategic organizational support, marketing, and legal services. And for the purchase report, the purchase listing total is approximately $318,000 from August. At this time, I'm happy to answer any questions the board might have.
All right. Any questions on contracts and purchases? No questions from the board? No? Okay, Member Brown?
I don't have any questions, but I just wanted to say, did look through all of it, and everything is in alignment with all of the goals that we have set for Calbright, and looking great. Great work.
Yep, great. Thank you for that. All right. Seeing no other comment from board, public comment, please.
The previous comment that was slated for item 5.3 has been retracted by Mike Palmieri, so there is no other public comment.
All right. So, no other comments on item 5.3. That moves us to constituency group reports. There is no report from the Calbright Academic Senate. I don't see any reports for the Calbright Faculty Association, if I'm not mistaken there. That would move us to item 6.3, California School Employees Association. And I see Donna Howard. Hi, Donna.
Hi. Good afternoon, members of the Calbright College Board of Trustees. On behalf of CSCA Bargaining Unit at Calbright College, I want to thank the Board of Trustees for listening to our concerns. I can tell from the questions and comments delivered today that we are being heard. I also want to express our ongoing request to be included in a meaningful way in the reorganization of Calbright College. We believe that our union should play a significant role in contributing to the college's success, yet opportunities for meaningful participation have been lacking. Our members are dedicated professionals who take pride in their daily work to enhance student success. Many joined Calbright College with the belief that the institution aimed to challenge systemic norms and question outdated management practices. We are committed to fostering an environment that supports this work. As we move forward, we hope Calbright will foster a culture of openness and inclusivity for its employees, just as it does for its students. This aligns with the shared vision we all hold. Together, we can realize Calbright's potential as the unicorn we envisioned, a transformative institution dedicated to serving our students and community. Thank you for considering our perspective. We look forward to your response and the possibility of collaborating more closely in the future.
Great. Thank you for that, Donna. That moves us to item 6.4, Associated Students of Calbright College, Deb Hemingway. I saw you online just a minute ago. Deb?
Thank you so much for the introduction. I really appreciate that. As President of the Associated Students of Calbright College, which is also known as ASCC, I am submitting this report to present our strategic vision for 2025, which is the implementation of a comprehensive student engagement plan. The aim is to increase student belonging, peer connection, and participation through low-barrier, high-impact initiatives designed for our designed for our fully-online community. Now, in alignment with Calbright's mission to serve adult learners balancing school, work, and family, our plan is rooted in empathy, accessibility, and student-driven leadership. Now, our objectives for 2025, ASCC would like to accomplish the following core goals